But, see, these are okay to cut. You don't want to cut your main frame rails because they run for one S T L, right? If you do that, you might have to shoot you in the head. So you're going to make these, right? And they're twice as expensive, you know?
So how do you keep them from getting blown up?
They're taking the whole one. I'm going to lay, uh, used oil and grease on the top. And then, when I have to weld all this, it'll be bare metal. I'm going to undercoat it off while I'm in there. I'll never have to worry about it. Just like the whole frame, I'm going to sand it down there. I don't, you know, rush traffic. Rubberized undercoating over that. And I'm going to glue it on. Figure for 300 bucks a month, I don't have to worry about that. First question out of every parts place, when you're looking at parts, is how rad it is? It's not. That's the only piece.
Wow.
That's how common it is, because they use recycled big iron. They didn't run their code, they called it a bought chassis. It's literally hilarious. Good old Jean. Trying to save money. Yeah. So if you guys probably have to be...
That's the only problem you have under, under, uh...
You got to change my whole one, Mike. You get it for the whole thing off. That one's done. You have it.
Yep.
And then I go to the price, and they wanted 200 bucks.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise. What's your name, gentlemen?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Tripp. Ooh, Alderman Bataille.
Here.
Alderman Cissé.
Here.
Alderman Philip Home.
Here.
Alderman Dempsey. Alderman Sliders.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell.
Here.
Alderman Delibro.
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
Declare quorum. Consideration of previous minutes. Your motion, Mr. Yaman?
Motion accept.
Mr. Rivers, second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Delibro abstains. Thank you.
Mr. President, before we get into the questions, a couple of motions. Motion to accept late communications, one and two, and add them to, uh, old business on the agenda.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Yaman?
Motion to add late ordinance number one under the ordinance section of the agenda.
Your second. Mr. Schur, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Public session, without anyone from the public wish to speak tonight. Clay? Please go forward. Mr. Mazanti, identify yourself.
Hey, William Mazanti, 21 Casteline. I'd like to thank Fred D'Amico and the fire marshal for getting that dumpster down there, but gentlemen, I've removed. Okay? Um, High Street there, I would like to get that changed to, uh, Howard Tenny cut that in half and have that changed. And, uh, one more thing. There's a hole in the road over by, uh, Comal Farms in the mobile, bubble. It's, it's sunk in when the ambulances or teletrucks left that hill. It bottomed out over there. Road sunk in right by, uh, Comal Farms and the mobile there. I brought it up last month and it's still sitting there. But, uh, the dumpster got taken away quick, though.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes. Please go forward, name and address, please.
Donna Lindgren, 81 Prindle Avenue, Ansonia. I believe communication number four in your agenda is from me. And my purpose in being here tonight and in writing that letter to you is hoping that Ansonia and you as the governing body of this city will, um, consider passing a resolution to ban one-way plastic bags that are so prolific on street sides and trees, clogging up sewer drains, uh, gumming up the works in recycling plants, and also threatening wildlife in rivers and streams and ponds. So, um, I've been following the legislation at the state level, and I've been told that it's now out of the Environment Committee and maybe will actually pass in the legislature this year. But the state of Connecticut needs to know that communities support this activity as well. There's two proposals, I believe. One of them is to charge five cents for a plastic bag at the grocery store. I think people will ignore that and will still have the problem even after that, if that's passed. So, I think this is our best chance to, uh, eliminate the hazard of, uh, one-way plastic bags. Somebody said to me, "Well, what am I going to clean up after my dog with?" Well, your newspaper comes in a plastic bag, your bread comes in a plastic bag, a lot of things come in plastic bags, which can be reused for other things. I don't think they're going to ever eliminate, you know, the bags that are used in the medical industry, because that's important, but, uh, or Ziploc bags, which are useful. But I think we should really do something about cleaning up our act, especially now that China is not going to buy our trash anymore, our plastic trash. So we've got to start handling it in-house, and I'm hoping that you'll join me in that effort. I have a petition here that will be sent to the state of Connecticut urging them to do this, and, um, I've collected lots of signatures. I'm hoping to add all of your names to this petition. If not tonight, then perhaps at the Earth Day celebration on April 27th, which is a Saturday at the Ansonia Nature and Recreation Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, please go forward.
Hi, my name's Ben Porizio. I'm at Three Friars Drive in Ansonia. And, uh, I don't know exactly what's on the agenda for tonight, but I was hoping that, uh, the city of Ansonia would, um, consider passing a resolution for no tolls, electronic tolling in the state of Connecticut. I'm hoping that, uh, we could join forces with cities like Stanford and, you know, push for, uh, fiscal responsibility from our state leaders.
Mr. Porizio is on the agenda.
He is on the agenda.
Tonight, he's on the agenda.
Oh, and I'd like to register my support for him. If there's anything I can do to help, let me know. Thank you.
When anyone else from the public wish to speak? Yes, please go forward. Name and address, please.
Pete DiMartino, 420 North Main Street. Uh, it's communication number two. Uh, my family has had a plot of land, 10 acres. It's been in the family for 30 or 40 years, and, uh, we don't really have any reason to develop it, but we really don't want any more either. We're thinking of selling it back to the town for open space. Uh, so I'm here if anyone has any questions in that regard. That's all.
Mr. Yaman?
Mr. President, just to brief, what happens if the process will be, will we be referring it to planning and zoning for a, what's called an 824 referral? And they'll make it favorable or unfavorable, depending if they think it could be used by the city, and then it will become back to us?
I believe that, I believe he came before us, uh, a couple of years ago, and we did refer to, we did get an 824 referral, um, from planning and zoning, but I don't know if you, I mean, I don't think you need to repeat the, the process. I just wanted you to know. Or be aware of that. I think, I think probably, well...
In any event, we had the 824, that referral before us, so we would probably have to at least push it over one month to retrieve that old 824 to find out whether or not it was favorable or not.
I'd like to refer to the city planner, Dave Elder, for some, uh, feedback. And go from there. Okay? So, we have a motion to refer it to the city planner? Mr. Rivers?
I'd like a motion to refer it to the city planner.
Mr. Blackwell? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we're going to refer it to the city planner, uh, Dave Elder, and he'll be hearing from us. Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Pat, please come forward, name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Pat Bummels from 4 Renahan Drive, Ansonia, Connecticut. So, I'm here again. Every year, we have had the gracious support of our mayor and all of you. So, we're extending an invitation again for the National Day of Prayer, which is May 2nd, okay, from 6:00 to 7:30 P.M., right here at the Veterans Memorial. And we would love to have everyone join us. Uh, you're going to see some posters around town. We were out today, and, uh, our theme this year is "Love One Another." And I think that that is something that's very much needed. I thought it was a great theme, and we would, uh, again, encourage everyone to join us. There will be music and prayer and the reading of the, uh, uh, governor's proclamation, the president's proclamation, and we'd love to have you join us in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Wait one second, Mr. Mazanti. Uh, would anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Edward Mazanti, 21 Casteline. I have one question. When's the bid going to go back out for, uh, for the police cars?
Uh, I couldn't answer that right now. Uh, can anyone answer?
Yeah, it hasn't been handled by the police commission yet. So it's not before this board. It has to be, uh, discussed through the police commission first before any action taken.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Would anyone else from the public wish to speak? Third call, anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Hearing none, public session is closed. Public official session, Mayor Cassetti, please.
Good evening, President Bacaro. Members of the Board of Aldermen residents, at a great city of Ansonia. Last month, I began my update with a moment of silence for my friend and former Alderman, Frank Delibro. This month, we are proud to welcome his son Frank to the Board of Aldermen. Frank, we welcome you, and we know you will make your mom Tracy and brother Artie here tonight and dad up in heaven very proud of you. I want to recognize and thank Ann Pitney for over 30 years of service to the city of Ansonia and 17 years to the Ansonia Police Commission. Ma Pitney, as she is affectionately called, was chairman of the police commission. Ma Pitney and I were both sworn in as co-members of the Ansonia Police Commission back in 2002. I learned a lot from Ann. We all did. She did a wonderful job, and we wish her the best of luck. Thank you for your many years of service, Ann. We have been working with the departments on crafting the city's budget, and we're doing everything we can to stabilize the mill rate. This year, the Board of Apportionment and Taxation will meet concurrently with the Finance Subcommittee to help expedite the process. All of our departments have already met with our budget consultant, Kurt Miller, and I, and I, so our department meetings have already occurred. Now our finance and vote can meet to go over the individual line items, ask any questions, and present their recommendations to this board. Budgeting should be occurring all year long. If our departments work together, we can really reduce the size of government. Reducing the size of government reduces the size our resident, of our residents' tax bill. We want to give our children and teachers the necessary resources to do their jobs, make Ansonia a more attractive, inviting, and exciting community, and of course, make life easier on our residents. I ask that you look at the budget as a whole and determine the best course of action to achieve our goals. When we separate out individual needs of our departments, the residents suffer. Speaking of making our taxpayers suffer, you will be introducing a resolution against tolls. Another way the state is asking our residents to kick in some more of their hard-earned money. We also want to beef up our revenue collection, and you will be discussing moving forward with the boot to help collect on over 1.5 million dollars in uncollected motor vehicle taxes. This will go a long way towards maximizing city services for our residents. I was recently notified that the city of Ansonia and the design team of De Carlo and Dahl will be receiving an award of merit in the transportation's utility civil category from the Connecticut Building Congress for our Riverwalk Segment 8. The CBC is an organization consisting of prominent leaders in the construction industry. We want to congratulate De Carlo and Dahl and Waters Construction for a job well done. As you know, the permitting process with the Army Corps, the flood dike issues, and the rail crossing made this an extremely challenging job. That required additional time and money. We were fortunate to have secured the additional grant funds in the amount of $600,000 needed to complete this project that began before this administration. Job well done. We look forward to breaking ground on Segment 3 and 4 this summer. Want to remind you of a couple of events. One right around the corner, our Easter egg hunt for the kids, which will take place at the Armory April 13th, this Saturday, at 11:00 for children's ages up to 5th grade. This event is sponsored by the Ansonia Cultural Commission and our friends of orange, U for Ansonia. And if you don't get enough candy there, Road Ready is sponsoring their own event on the 20th at Veterans Park. The other event is Rock the Valley, which is shaping up to be another exciting venue. Saturday, August 24th, the one, the one of the premier Aerosmith cover bands in the country, Draw the Line. Ticket proceeds will go to benefit Ansonia youth sports teams, all of them. So I hope everyone comes out for what will be an exciting end of the summer event for a great cause. I hope you will all be available to attend our next grand opening on Main Street, the hub, which will be opening in a couple of weeks, according to the new owners. And there is another new place opening on Main Street, which will be a brand-new venue for Ansonia. More to come in the upcoming weeks. I know my ED is getting a bit nervous, so I won't say anything more about the new venue, which will really have something you will enjoy. I wish everyone, uh, I wish everyone a wonderful Easter, uh, holiday for your friends and family. Enjoy the warm weather and all the city has to offer. God bless you all, and God bless the city of Ansonia. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience for Mayor Cassetti? Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
What's the story with that sign up there?
Huh?
What's the story with that sign up there?
Oh, yeah.
Is that in it?
Oh, no, it's, it's not italic.
All right.
It's not italic.
That's it.
Congratulations to Alderman Delibro, welcome aboard. Uh, tonight, we have, uh... Uh, tonight, we have several ordinances on the agenda. We have also several resolutions on new business. That's the product of a lot of hard work from our ordinance committee, and they're not done yet. They're still exploring, uh, some legislation involving the area surrounding Griffin Hospital and tackling the parking situation there. So we're likely to see, um, some more legislation come in in, uh, the next two months. Um, we've been working on insurance claims, I want the Board of Aldermen to know, for both the damage at Waverly Avenue and also Pershing Drive. We had two large repair incidents there. Uh, we're waiting on responses back and investigations from our own insurance company, and also, especially with Waverly Avenue, taking a look at potentially responsible parties and holding them accountable. And of course, we have a workers' comp issue to discuss in executive session. This is the second time we're going to be looking at that, and that's, of course, going to be discussed later on tonight. Until then, any questions?
Thank you. Ashley O'Malley, Economic Development Director.
Okay, thank you, President Bacaro, members of the Board of Aldermen. Uh, welcome, Frank Delibro. I have about 23 questions for you to answer right now. Um, no, uh, welcome, Frank. We're happy to have you, proud of you. Um, on the agenda tonight is the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program. Excuse me. And so I just want to briefly explain this. Uh, what happens with this, uh, program offered by the state of Connecticut's Department of Revenue Services is that any municipal department or nonprofit that has a project which fits into any of these categories, uh, defined in the tax credit program, for instance, job training, education, community services, crime prevention, construction or rehabilitation of low to moderate income housing, donation of money to an open space, um, acquisition fund, child daycare, child services. So, it's a pretty broad, there are pretty broad care categories under which a city department or a nonprofit can apply. Um, just, uh, by way of an example, maybe, the, um, Little League came to us and said they'd let, they have a project for a field that they want, uh, help with, and they want the city's help, and, um, not enough money to do the project. So if they were to fill out this form, um, complete it, the city would authorize it. Uh, it's up to a maximum of $150,000. And then any business firm, any business entity that wishes to donate up to $150,000, they would get up to 75% of a, uh, tax credit. Um, so for, for any, uh, cash amount that they donate, they'll get, they'll receive a tax credit. Those applications will come back to this board if we get any. I hope we do. We're going to do our best to, uh, advertise the program, put it out on Facebook and, um, and try to, and try to encourage people to apply. It's free to apply, um, and then, uh, we just want to advertise so maybe interested businesses can donate. So if you can think of a project, um, and, and want to encourage people to apply, please do so. I know it's budget season, so some of those projects that can't be fit into budgets could be helpful here. Um, the other, the other item that I want... Should we be talking about this now? It's old business. It's under old business, but, um, Chairman Hian of the Planning and Zoning Commission was kind enough to, to give this to us. Um, it's a, it is the 824 referral that we asked for, for the state of Connecticut last month, um, so that they can, the state can do work on the traffic control signal, uh, across from the 65 Main Street, across from the new site of the new PD station. And I'm also kind of in a hurry to get this, get them working on that project, because we're going to start working on our, um, community connectivity, the sidewalks on Main Street. So with that, I mean, there's a lot going on that will probably all happen in the summertime. Um, the specs are ready for Prindle Avenue, so those are going out. Um, community connectivity is about 80% designed, and the, uh, Riverwalk Segments 3 and 4 is about 90%. So, which means that all of those projects will be, um, will be going out to bid and construction starting in the summer. Also, um, PD, we're hoping to have the bid specs by the end of May, I believe, or, or mid-May. Um, out with those, uh, hope to get return on bids in June, and out for construction with the renovations in July. In the meantime, our environmental consultants are working on, uh, some of the abatement issues in that building prior to the construction and renovation going on. Um, I think that's it. We don't want to talk about anything new coming to Main Street, or take any questions on that either.
Any update on the basketballs for Kalamata Park?
Yep. Um, we priced them out. We, we are okay, we are okay with purchasing them. Um, there may be a slight issue with, um, some of the neighbors there, and we want to work those out before we install anything and get their concurrence, or not, maybe, but we can talk about that after, but, yeah. Any other questions, Alderman Yaman?
Um, it's actually, I actually have two. The Neighborhood Assistance Program, can, the program, sort of how you described it, can you, kind of youth sports program, that's a, that's a charitable organization, do a project that's going to benefit municipal property, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's acceptable, okay. Um, and, second, with the traffic easement, is there a specific action that we need during tonight?
Um, I think if you just, if you'll just approve the easement, um, the state of Connecticut, you know, I'll just notify them tomorrow because they're anxiously awaiting that. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Greg Martin, Director of Preservation Services.
Thank you. President Bacaro, greetings, members of the board. Um, we have a lot of beautification projects in motion, but three that are actually taking place as we speak, and this month will be finished up, finishing up. Start with Haight-Stowe Park, Calley Pond, uh, the hiking trail through the woods has been completed, um, been marked out. Um, had markers installed, about 100 markers around the trail, so when you're going through the woods, you can navigate nicely. Um, branches have been cleared, so when the leaves come up, they won't hide the markers, and you'll still see nice, visible trail. Um, litter's been cleaned out. Uh, these four projects were all taken care of by me over the past four weeks, and it took like two 50-gallon, uh, bags of bottles and cans, a lot of beer party stuff there over the decades. But the woods are nice and clean now. And, uh, last week, we had brand-new, uh, LED spotlights were installed, uh, in the front end of the park, so hopefully that'll curb any nighttime activity or any vandalism potential. Um, this Saturday, we have an extensive landscaping taking place at the Armory Hill. It's kind of the phase two from last year. Um, we have, it's been professionally designed by a horticulturist from Monroe, so she'll be on hand along with, uh, hired a, uh, we have some volunteers coming in along with, uh, some other professional landscapers, but we'll be planting about 2,000 plugs of wildflowers and shrubs and some, uh, handful of cedar trees. So, uh, give it a few months, let it all kind of germinate and catch on, and it should look pretty nice by the end of the summer going forward. And then also this month, it's kind of the last phase of graffiti removal in the city. This is the fourth year in a row. We've got 50 tags identified. These are what I call kind of nuisance tags. You'll see my, you know, the street signs, telephone poles, there's a few on some public buildings. But, uh, with this round, and this is all, uh, removed, you know, it's not paint over, it's actually going to be sprayed off and cleaned off. But with this, uh, with the completion of this program, it should almost be graffiti extinct. One of the few towns, I guess, in the state that could probably claim that. So looking forward to that. And that's where you go. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Greg.
Okay.
Cam, controller?
Good evening, everyone. Things in finance are going well. Um, as Mayor mentioned, we're currently working on budget for next year, but, uh, finance is also working on our fiscal year this year, kind of coming to a close in a few months, so working on going over accounts and analyzing things. Uh, we've also got some vans that will be expiring next month, so we're working on getting new ones in place to replace them. That's about all. Thank you.
Any questions for Cam? Thank you, Cam. Chief?
Good evening. Um, a couple of things, shortlist this, this month. Uh, our new officer that came out of the academy is finishing off FTO. He'll be released Monday to solo status. Our newest officer that graduated two weeks ago is now in his second week of field training, so, uh, you'll see him, uh, moving around with another veteran officer. We'll be asking tonight, you, you've seen the communication from me, we're going to be asking for the disposal of two old police vehicles, a pickup truck and a BMW. Those are vehicles that we, uh, were able to get through asset forfeiture over the years. Um, the requirement is, one of them we have to, uh, have destroyed because it had a trap in it, only police officers or police departments can own that. And it's an old truck, it's, it's not worth much. And the other vehicle, we're looking to dispose of by either using an auction or, um, propertyroom.com is something that police departments use, and they come and get your property, and they, they sell it, and that money goes back into the asset forfeiture account. Um, so if you have any questions about that, I can answer that in a minute. We are working, and I talked to John, we're working on a couple of pedestrian crossing signs, one at Plasky and Finney, and the one down here at Central Street. Uh, we've got some insurance claims in from the vehicles that struck those signs, so we're just trying to get some resolution, but we have not forgotten about them. Uh, and that reminds me, uh, out in front of Bank of America, we're working on that. Uh, Mike Eamon and I have been trying to get it fixed. We've got Marla Controls, they're going to come up and try to get it reset for us, or repair if there's, uh, damage to something. So you should see that, uh, working soon. We're working on a couple of things, uh, Dave, we talked about, and, and I'll be meeting with the police commission tomorrow night, um, about a temporary, hopefully a temporary to permanent solution of the parking issues up around Predigat School. Obviously, last week's meeting got canceled, so we couldn't... Obviously, last week's meeting got canceled, so we couldn't do much with it. So, I'm going to present that to the board to see if we can alleviate some of that double parking and traffic that occurs up there on a daily basis. And I've worked with Bobby Evans also, so we've come up with some, again, temporary to permanent solutions, hopefully that we can resolve that once and for all. And as you'll see, if you've been walking or driving around town, we've really put up a concerted effort with our motor vehicle enforcement throughout town, stop signs, radar, intersections, cell phone usage. We made quite a few stops, I reported last month alone, our officers stopped over 800 cars throughout the month. So, we've been really busy with that, trying to step up and address concerns in each and every neighborhood as best as we can. We tell people if they have a concern, let us know, and we can address it. And I would answer, any questions?
Mr. Blackwell?
Chief Cota kind of beat me to the punch, but I just wanted to thank him for all the help that you assisted me with this month in trying to get that problem resolved. And also Bobby Evans, I believe you're working injunction, like Lieutenant, excuse me, Chief Cota said. Also, I just want to congratulate you on the job you're doing. As you know, that, you know, I know almost everybody in that Police Department, people around town, and you're like a breath of fresh air there. They're really excited about the things you're doing there. You're being proactive, as one of the officers told me. You're really doing a great job. I'm glad that you live in town. I've heard some officers complain that you're driving around on midnights looking and making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to. And I thank you for that, because you're making them accountable, and that's what we need. But, you know, you have my full support. I'd like to give the support of a lot of these people in this room, but, you know, I can't commend you enough on the job that you're doing.
Any other questions for the chief? Mr. Stone?
Go ahead.
I was talking to Joe about the plastic bags on the signs there.
Yes.
Are they coming up soon?
Yeah, we're going to work on that. That was supposed to get resolved last week at our Police Commission meeting. We're going to talk about it tomorrow night. Shiel and I and Lieutenant Lynch met with the engineers, and they explained why all those signs came up. The road is more narrow than it's been, so we should be able to resolve that tomorrow night at the Police Commission meeting, and we'll get those bags off those signs for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
Chief, do you have any business cards yet?
I do. I'm here, they're in my truck.
Oh, okay.
I figured you knew me, then I would...
I promise not to bother you.
I can represent you one.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Mr. Garcia, Public Works. I'll make myself brief so we can get out early tonight. Got the sweeper on the road again, back on the road every day, trying to get some of this sand and salt that we had on the roads. Soccer fields, baseball fields are finally getting back together again. Soccer fields are pretty much, we've got loomed down, we repaired some of the damage, so they're all marked up, so the kids are playing soccer. Baseball's supposed to be going tonight, I'm not sure if it's, they're on or not, but we got it all cleared up and ready to go.
They were there.
Good. The dugouts and all the field, we're going to be putting the roofs on. Mr. Blackwell brought to my attention that the brother shipper was hanging off, and the roofs are in bad shape, so we're going to start that probably next week. Yes, I did.
I have pitters of the new.
Yeah.
We were just sitting in the bleachers.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
I don't even know if they've ever been changed.
It's been a lot of years.
Yeah.
Should have been, the shingles on it should be roll roofing, so we're going to strip it, put roll roofing on it, do it the right way, new drip edge, freshen it up a little bit, paint them, take the plywood down underneath because it's a mess.
If you need help, let me know, I'll volunteer my time.
We're good, thank you, but we're going to be taking care of it. Sean put the gate up today and did what he had to do.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yep. Other than that, we have take two that takes care of our electronics in town. I was going to get rid of them, get them to a different hauler, so what I did was, they came out, they're paying us for our electronics now five cents a pound, and they're also taking our refrigerators, freezers, instead of paying $7 apiece, they're taking it for free now, so we're going to be probably saving $10,000 a year without getting the refrigerators and air conditioners. So, that was a big plus for us this year. Same thing with tires. My Board of Public Works meeting we had last week, we discussed charging for tires. We're spending $1,000 a month on taking tires and disposing of them. Our disposal costs are getting way out of hand at Public Works, so we're going to try to reduce some of the costs for the taxpayers. People come in, $5 a tire. That'll cover our cost, and estimate $12,000 a year savings also there, which will help us. Got to get a debit machine in there so people can come in, swipe their card. I think the problem is, people are, wherever they go, they have to pay to get rid of tires. All transfer stations are paying. Town fair tire, you get your tires changed, you've got to pay $5 apiece. People know that, they're coming in, they're filling a dumpster a week, they're bringing in eight, 10 tires a resident, and we're disposing of them and paying for them. So, my Board agreed on charging for it, and that's why I'm going to ask your Board for recommendations tonight, if you can do that. Also, our bulk pickup. We're doing six months a year right now, three months in the spring, three months in the fall. I have very limited guys on my team, which you guys know. There's five guys a day going out there for six months, full days. We're bringing in, on average, three 40-yard dumpsters per day. It costs us over $2,000 every day for disposal of the bulk. We recommended to my Board, and they approved it, cutting it back six weeks and six weeks. Six weeks in the fall, six weeks in the spring. People will still get their pickup, it'll cut it in half, it'll give me three more months a year to use my men elsewhere, take care of catch bases, curbs, roadside equipment, paint the stripes on these crosswalks where the kids going to school. We can never get to them, usually we get close to them, but we never finish it, because we're mostly out there doing bulk pickup six months out of the year, leave pickup. Today, we had like 18 leave stops and 18 bulk stops. I had five guys out there all day, and they didn't finish. I mean, and there's just half my crew. The other four, three guys are at a transfer station working, a couple of guys are in maintenance. After that, if somebody calls, a tree falls, or we've got a sewer backup, actually, I got three guys out right now in a sewer backup on Plasky Highway. So, if something pops up, I've got to take guys off the street, the bulk waits till tomorrow, and we're behind the schedule. So, we're going to try to decrease it, and I think by decreasing it, people will go elsewhere with it, or they can bring it in free of charge, because it's bulky material. I think it'll save us for tonnage throughout the year, and we're still giving residents enough time, three months a year for their bulk, and the ones that want to bring it to the transfer station, they're welcome to bring it year-round, we'll take it. So, I think it would go well, save us some tonnage and give us some more man-hours. Another thing that we're discussing today was cutting the hours at the transfer station. A lot of towns are doing two days, three days. Right now, we're doing six days. There's days that we don't get many people in. We're discussing maybe doing it Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday, because everybody's off on Saturday. It'll cut our three men down, I can use them three guys, three days a week throughout the city, doing other things. Something I'm bringing up today to the Board, maybe you can give us some thought, we're going to work on it next month, I think it'll give us a big savings. The people that are contractors out there that are picking up, doing work for people that are paying us, they'll go elsewhere on three days. Our tonnage will drop, they'll go to Winter Brothers in Shelton, they'll go to Derby, they'll pay for it, it'll save us money on tonnage. Our man-hours will go elsewhere, we'll save on diesel fuel for our machine, three days a week, it'll cut it in half. If we just try to cut what we can cut, keep our budget the same as it was last year, we've got to make some changes, but I think we'll build some revenue out of this rubbish also, keep the price down for the next year or two, and give our guys somewhere else to go. Other than that, that's about it. That's all I have for yous. Any questions, Charlie?
Can I direct the question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I didn't read all the communications. Did we have a communication drawn up for his request? Or are we just going to approve it without a communication? For the tires, you didn't mention ATM machine.
I mentioned it, but that's something we have to, that has to go through Finance.
Does it? I thought it was something simple we could approve tonight.
Yeah, because I thought this has been going on for almost a whole year now.
It's been going on for a while, and I know the government machine has to go somehow through Finance.
It should be approved tonight.
It'll be, it'll be, maybe we'll work on it.
I'd recommend the Board of Alderman make a motion on the record. For each item, if you'd like, that way you can see that the Board of Alderman are giving their approval for each of those changes.
Well, you have the tires.
The tires.
The ATM, your city bulk.
The bulk, yeah. Transfer station, cutting, reducing the hours.
Monday, Wednesday.
We can work the hours on that. I'm just thinking Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, beginning of the week, middle of the week, and at the end of the week. Saturday's for sure, because people are off, they can bring their rubbish to the transfer station.
It'll go for three days.
Three days, alleviate us, will give us three more days of three men, we can get a lot more done without having to hire anybody and keep our payroll down.
Would the hours on Saturday be extended then?
I didn't work on, I don't know, I mean, we could extend it if we need to, we can give it a shot, see how things work. If there's complaints down the road, maybe we can increase it, but I would probably keep it the same way.
Mike, how do the hours on Saturday look compared to other communities around?
They're all, everybody's half-day on a Saturday. Nobody works an eight-hour shift.
How do the hours look during the week for other communities?
Same thing, eight-hour days are working. We're working from seven to three every day.
Five days a week.
Five days a week.
A lot of communities in the area also do five days a week during the week for the transfer station.
Some of them do, and a lot of them don't anymore. A lot of the rural towns, they're one day a week. Woolbridge, Orange, they're down two days a week. Some of them are like, only a couple of days a week. Oxford's like, I think, one day a week. So, we're giving people three days a week to have enough time to come in, and if they don't, I mean, our guys are out there on the roads, if there's something they need picked up, we'll pick it up even throughout the course of the year. We do that for residents. It's the elderly people, they have no way to get it to us, they call, and we accommodate them.
It's important to know that those Saturdays are actually overtime hours.
It is, that's the biggest issue. I wish we could cut Saturdays out, because there's three men there, four and a half hours per day throughout the year, but them are the days that people...
But, that's your highest spotlight, I would figure.
People are off Saturdays, and if we cut that, we'll, you know, we'll be closed before the people get out of work.
I have one that's...
Yeah, I think we need to keep Saturday, just to keep it, yes.
You and John brought up actually a good point, and Charlie too, but my point is, is that if we're going to cut the transfer station on three days a week.
Yeah.
Try to eliminate Saturday, I guess, is your busiest day, but it's also your highest paying day.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to do the three days a week, but 12 to eight? Have guys come in, so this way, when people get out of work, when I got to work, I got to wait till Saturday.
Yeah, I know, a lot of people go.
That's why Saturday's your busiest day, because that's the majority of the people. What I'm saying is, have a second shift, you know, three guys, that three days a week, they work 12 to eight.
Yeah.
This way, it gives people a chance to get out of work, make their dump runs, and maybe it'll alleviate some of the Saturday pressure to the point where we can actually do away with it.
It's not a bad idea, I mean, or the three days a week, have it till, or even have it later, have it till six o'clock.
If it gives people that would usually come on a Saturday, be able to do it during the week, and then hopefully alleviate Saturdays altogether.
So, I think we'd have to, that's a union issue, I think, changing hours.
Really, I understand, it's very complicated.
But, that is, that's a good idea, I like that idea.
But, that's overtime, then.
Well, if they change your eight hours, have them come in later, have them come in like...
People get out of work, they can go to the dump, and it alleviates the Saturday rush, because I was there on Saturday, it's crazy, and we pay a lot of money for them people.
Yeah.
So, if you could work with the guys and try to get them to work like a, you know, a swing shift almost.
Yeah, I just...
Or come in later and work later.
Residents are going to go, going crazy on Saturdays.
I think you're right.
Mike, I said Monday, Wednesday, and then Saturday. Can you see when your busiest times are on Monday, Wednesday, and then schedule around that?
Monday's usually a busy day, for some reason, after the weekend, people coming with their trash.
I'm thinking if you're going to do a couple of days a week, schedule around your volume rather than whatever. If you know you're busy from morning to afternoon, schedule around that, and have your guys go do something else rather than a blanket time of who knows who's coming.
You see, we have to still staff the facility if we're open. Three people have to be there, the machine has to be there, the scale man has to be there, and the guy up on top to direct the people where to put it. If we could just, like, put one person in charge, but it'd be a disaster. Right now, the place is nice and clean, it's pristine, everybody knows what they're doing. The cut to days is probably the best way to do it, I could use them guys elsewhere. Like Dave says, not a bad idea.
Mike, maybe we could take a look at the schedule of surrounding towns and make sure we're open on days that they're not.
Right.
And we're not open on days that they are. That way, you know, you're cutting it down, you're saving money, but if someone shows up, it could easily be listed there, you can go to Derby, or you could go to...
Our closest people is Derby and Shelton, they're our closest, that people go to if we're not there.
They're really, the service will be available every day.
Right, every day, and they're open. Shelton's open every day because it's, they're a private concern, and Derby actually has a private contractor running it, so they're open every day.
So, we'll look at those schedules then, we'll match them.
Very good.
With a three-day schedule that does any convenience.
Yeah, we could change days, it's just something I was just putting out there, is three days, I figured that would be the best way to run it, but we can change days.
So, can we approve the other two things, and then hold on to this, the days?
Agree on it. We'll authorize the Public Works to proceed on a three-day schedule based on, you know, what their research.
Mike, back to the tires. So, if I live in Orange, and I'm getting four tires for my car at Town Fair.
Yeah.
How do I dispose of them if I live in Orange?
They're paying, they're paying in Orange, they have a dumpster, people are paying all over, Derby they're paying.
But, if I have my friend in Ansonia take the tires to Ansonia, I beat it.
And that's, and that's, believe it or not...
And that's happening.
That's happening. That's happening, even bulk, we're going to people's homes, we pick up more bulk than the city of Shelton, we're half the size. You know, when I was in Derby, "I got bulk tomorrow, bring your stuff over." It's happening.
Yeah.
And I know by cutting this time, we're going to cut tonnage, at the end of the year, we're going to see a significant savings, there's no question about it. Because you could be at your house on Winkley Avenue, or if your friend in Derby's coming over, "Oh, bring your TV over, we got a bulk pickup tomorrow." They get rid of it, you know, and they're picked up, and that's definitely happening.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why I want to see this, and we can get our tonnage down, we'll save some money next year and keep, we can keep my budget the way it is for the next couple of years if this works out, without increase, that's what I'm hoping for. So, it's your approval.
Any other questions for Mr. Garcia? Mr. Blackwell?
Mike, I know that you're sure staff, I get the thing, but I don't know if it's you, Allison, or Greg Martin, the nature center.
Yeah.
I went up there Saturday with the kids.
Right.
It was very busy, it was a nice day.
Yeah.
I don't think I have to go into condition.
Right, right.
Could we work on that somehow, some way, because, I don't know, you can take a ride up there tomorrow, I can even go with you.
I was there yesterday, looking at the field, the soccer field.
Not even, I'm talking about the playground.
Yeah.
You know, some of them are parked a lot where it meets the road going down, so it'll start to crack, I'm not sure if that could be...
Yeah, we spread some buildings last week also, them big potholes, we brought two loads up, we've been up there lately doing some things to it.
No, like I said, my kids are trying to play, my point is, people were complaining, and it was embarrassing, there's trees hanging down, it just...
After the winter, all the fields, yeah, not enough. We've been working mostly on our soccer fields, football, baseball.
That's why I hate to burn you with it.
No, no, you're right.
People come from out of town, you know, that's, you know, was...
Usually Allison calls if something's really bad.
...the city gems, and it's in the deplorable state, unfortunately.
We have some playground trips that she has to pile up, they've got to be spread again. A lot of her people are doing it, stuff that she can't get, like cut the grass in a weak handle, like the roadway we did, like I said, we put some buildings last week. Sean's been up there taking care of the field, whatever we can do to take care of it.
If you have some time, I'd like to take a walk.
Yeah, definitely.
Try to figure out, there has to be a way, because we can't just let it just go to hell, we have to maintain it some way, one way or another.
I, I have a list, believe it or not, from Allison up there.
Yeah, I assume you do.
I do. And we, we get the most important things we could.
Understood, I, I don't have to explain, I get it.
I appreciate it, Dave, thank you.
Mike, L, L Street, the corner of L's and Granite, there's a swath of curbs that was wiped out and pushed in a pile.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're been out there picking them up, hopefully I can get them done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Your brief presentation. Finance Committee, is there a motion to pay all bills to find them to be accurate and correct?
So.
Rich, seconded by Mr. Yaman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, WPCA Committee, Mr. Stone, anything to report tonight?
So, we're having an ordinance meeting for this, right? Discuss this, so, some of the beefier items, I think, can be weighted on for that. As far as the rate goes per unit, we kept the rate the same at two seventy. Um, one thing I think that's worth talking about is, is that because it's been so dry, the company that's, that was monitoring our seepage in our lines is ha, is having to, uh, stay for another, I think it's a week, that they're gonna keep their instruments in the pipes so they can check for the leakage, so that's costing, gonna cost us about twenty thousand dollars more than we anticipated, but I think it'd be money well spent. Any questions? Save me till ordinance.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Uh, Fire Committee, Mr. Short?
Yep. Department activity for the month of March 2019, uh, the fire department responded to forty-seven calls, highlighted by a total of eight structure fires of, of various kinds, uh, four motor vehicle assists, uh, five electrical hazards, and nine miscellaneous public service, good intent, for a total of forty-seven calls for the month of March. That's it.
Most accept their report. Mr. Yaman, seconded by Mr. Cassetti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Yaman, ordinance committee, anything to report?
I'm sure there is. Well, yes, we have the three ordinances that we just, we had a public hearing on prior to this meeting at six thirty. Um, I described them a little bit during the public hearing, but ordinance number one is the ordinance regarding the WPCA, changing some of the language to include two members of the Board of Public Works, expanding the board to nine members, um, and requiring a training session every other year for members of the WPCA. Uh, ordinance number two is the revising of the permits and fees section, section six dash five. Basically changing the language there to comply with the state statute, changing from a, changing it to indicate that it's an administrative fee for work without a permit. And then the third one, as we discussed, was with regards to arms. It's basically an enabling statute, laying out how arms is comprised, so that they can submit their EMS plan to the state. And those were all unanimously voted out of the ordinance today.
Thank you, Mr. Yaman. Mr. Cassetti, Housing, Housing Committee?
Yeah, uh, just to let you know that the move, that the housing authority is moved is to three, uh, three seventy Main Street, that's the old Social Security building. They're open for business, and I don't have anything else to discuss.
Thank you. Mr. Blackwell, the Arms Committee report, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, for the month of March 2019, Arms responded to two hundred and forty-five calls for service. We also provided twelve calls for mutual aid to the city of Derby. Uh, we received two calls of mutual aid to the city of Ansonia. Uh, one was on a second call for service, while one of our ambulances was on a first call. And one was for a third call for service, while two of our ambulances were out on calls, we received a third call. Griffin Hospital was our highest receiving hospital at a hundred and thirty patients, followed by Yale New Haven Hospital at eighteen. The billing revenue for the month was sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and eleven cents. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Short? Seconded by Mr. Cassetti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Missed the reports?
Were you doing that, you, you, you said any other committees, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, I was reading the Board of Education's, um, meeting, and, uh, can you explain to me which superintendent's getting the six thousand dollar pay increase?
It's eight thousand.
Is it eight thousand?
Yeah.
I thought it was six thousand.
Eight thousand, six thousand.
Can somebody explain to me which, that's not, that's not the previous superintendent, it must be Dr.?
No, I can't explain it, no. Is that, uh, was that voted on by the board?
I think it's up for, it's up for vote, uh, vote, uh, next, your next meeting, when is that? Tomorrow. Did you know about that? Well, I saw my, yeah, it's in my phone. So you didn't know about that? I just, can you?
I saw it on the agenda, but we'll, we'll probably drill down into that tomorrow night. I'm not sure what that's all about, since the superintendent was just giving a three and a half percent increase a few months ago.
Which superintendent?
The firing.
Okay, so, yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not sure, Charlie, Tracy and I will drill down tomorrow night, I'm sure.
I, I really mention that for the public, because it's, I find it very upsetting that you hear all the time about needing to share the money with the kids and that, and we donated all this money to help them out, and now they're, uh, this may not be helpful for us, but now, now, now they're, they're, well, I'm just saying, you know, because I'm, I'm upset about it, and I'm and I'm showing some anger, and maybe that's immature of me, but I'm just, it's always about the kids, and that money's getting put, diverted somewhere else.
Uh, Mr. Evans had his hand up from the Board of Ed, Mr. Evans?
As you're on the agenda, um, what it is, is it's her three and a half percent, but she's going back into the scholarship for the students of Ansonia.
Well, if she does do that, I, I'd publicize that as much as possible.
Thanks, Paul.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mariney?
This one given up, uh, to really a commission that's not on the agenda, the recreation, as it relates to the soccer board, Ansonia youth soccer. As we know, we had a bit of an issue, a bit of a crisis with soccer, given that the season was coming up, and we have vandalism at both Nature Center and Colony Park. I believe I reported this back a couple of months ago, but the perpetrators of the vandalism have been caught, and we're actually in the process of working with the courts to get restitution. Um, however, another bright side of that, uh, the soccer board, Melissa Rade, Stephen Kish, Paul Vellardi, have been very persistent from the beginning, trying to make sure that proper provisions were made, so that the season could go forward, uh, given the damage to Colony and the Nature Center. And Mayor's Office has been working very closely with them for a while, and we were to be able to successfully obtain Emmett O'Brien. We want to thank, of course, Emmett O'Brien for making their field available, uh, for the season, and also the high school. And we want to thank the Board of Ed, and also the Assistant Superintendent DeBacco, for making sure that we do have access for the program to the high school field. Um, and we're going to use the opportunity to not only repair Nature Center and Colony, but also hopefully reinvest into the fields, give them some downtime to regenerate, to get better grass, to just make the program better in the future, while we're playing at the high school. So I really want to thank Soccer Board, and its president, and its members for working to basically handle the displacement of all of the programs successfully, all the different leagues within the soccer group, and also, you know, working with the city to make sure we do obtain replacement fields.
Thank you, that's good news, for those black kids. Mr. Blackwell?
I have a question for, uh, Mr. Mariney. Uh, John, when you use Emmett O'Brien, I know there was a gentleman here last, last month, I believe, from the, uh, the state of Connecticut. Is it possible in any way to, I know Emmett O'Brien just rebuilt, um, their track up there, is it possible between you and Sheila to work with them in some way, um, to turf that field? Um, to where, you know, as you know, like you said, letting the fields regenerate, um, that's a problem, you know, usage, um, then you have to maintain them and everything else. If we can work with the state and maybe go, I'm not sure how it works, I don't even know if it's possible, but to turf that field, to where we can use it, um, without, you know, having to maintain it constantly and stuff like that, is that something that?
So we originally approached them back about two years ago about doing a joint application, because we knew that despite their new complex, they had an interest in expanding athletics. So we threw into Gentile, actually, got, pulled them aside, and asked them about the idea of going in on a joint application for a facility that could be shared. And maybe it doesn't have to be as dramatic as a whole new facility, maybe, um, actually, I think it's a good idea, what about an enhancement to an existing one that both the city and Emmett O'Brien can make use of. And, um, you know, again, we've had some very good collaboration with the here, with this soccer situation. I think, uh, we probably could reach back out to them and see if they'd be willing to put an application in.
Yeah, they had originally requested of their legislators of ten million dollars to do some sort of athletic facility. And, um, and the, I thought, I think the thought at that time was that there wasn't gonna be enough money to get, after completing a ninety million dollar renovation, that they just somehow did not include that in part, as part of their project. So, um, as John said, we reached out to them, because we thought it'd be a stronger application. And we could still do that, but we can also ask them where they are in terms of what they need for their fields, and do they want to turf? But I think, I think you're right.
The more I learn about soccer, it's, one, it's a thriving program, which is good.
Yeah.
And two, it requires many fields, because there's different age groups.
Where and how?
And as Mike knows, and everybody else knows, Jeff Bull, they require maintenance.
Yeah.
And like John said, they have to, you know, regenerate themselves.
Right.
If we can get turf, you can use those things all day long.
Constantly, yeah.
And you don't have to maintain them, and they're still good for the next game.
I think Emmett wants turf too, Dave, so that's a good suggestion, but we can reach back out to them.
Yeah, just to try to alleviate a little bit of our burden on, we have a ton of parts that they have to maintain.
Yeah.
It's, it's just a lot on everybody, and, you know, I don't want to see a soccer program that's thriving, you know, damaged because of something like that, but I think you guys are on the right track. The more we try to work with other entities and other municipalities in the state, I think we can accomplish a lot more for a lot less money.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, any other committees? Okay. Vote recommendations, any discussion on the vote recommendations tonight, gentlemen? Is there a motion to approve all the vote recommendations, motions one, two, and three, I believe?
I make a motion.
Mr. Rivers, seconded by Mr. Cassetti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Just want to make note of the land use department report. Last month, the light department, light enforcement brought in sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'd like to, um, commend Ron DeCarini and Dave Blackwell Senior for their efforts in this area. Total revenue for March 2019 was seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents. Great job by that. Tax collector report and request for refunds, Mr. Castleitis?
Make a motion to accept the tax collectors' report and request for refunds in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-seven cents, if found to be correct.
Seconded by Mr. Short, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Accidents and claims, Mr. Castleitis?
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Sorry. Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Communications, communication number one, we got a communication from Chief Coder regarding the sale of the 2008 BMW, and also the destruction of the nineteen ninety-nine Chevy Silverado, Mr. Castleitis?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and seconded by Mr. Yaman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, Mr. Peter DiMartino, regarding the purchase of land at four and twenty North Main Street, Ansonia.
This is previously referred to, David.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, number three, Mr. Evans has a, uh, communication regarding a bid waiver to award the contract of replacing the Boyle's Jefferson Middle School to Connecticut Boyle Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Rivers?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Yaman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number four, Donald Ingraham's proposing that the city of Ansonia adopt a resolution to ban the one-way plastic shopping bags. I'd like to refer this to Corporation Council. Mr. Yaman, Mr. Short?
Second.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Donald, that's a good idea, thank you. Uh, number five, Scott Jackson, Commissioner of Department of Revenue Services, regarding the 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
I just need, uh. Yeah, a motion to move forward with the, with the, I don't even know if I need that, but.
Yeah, because you don't have the application yet, right?
Yeah, I'll bring the applications before this board, but I just, you know, your consensus on the program and, you know, help, help promote it, I guess, so.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted, I want you to vote.
All right, I'll make a motion to.
Mr. Rivers, and seconded by Mr. Short. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Yaman, oppose the resolution, uh, read it, opposing tolls on new taxes. Whereas Governor Lamont and members of the Connecticut General Assembly have proposed the placement of tolls on major interstate highways in Connecticut to raise revenue and address traffic congestion, and whereas members of the Connecticut General Assembly are considering a variety of new taxes, including new taxes on gasoline, heating oil, and electric bills. And whereas the impact of tolls and new taxes may adversely impact the residents of the city of Ansonia, placing additional financial burdens on Connecticut residents that already pay more in taxes and fees than most residents in other states around the country, and whereas the implementation of tolls without financial relief for those who are required to travel regularly across the state of Connecticut may adversely impact Ansonia residents, and whereas the implementation of tolls may adversely impact the flow of customers, the Ansonia's growing commercially restaurant base, thereby harming Ansonia's economy and business community. Whereas if not carefully planned, the destructive implementation of tolls can negatively impact congestion on roads across Connecticut as drivers attempt to avoid gantries, which may raise issues of safety, and whereas tolls can become an oppressive tax for the residents and businesses of Ansonia. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Ansonia Board of Alden is opposed to the installation of a system of tolls in the state of Connecticut that may unfairly, adversely impact Ansonia residents financially, impact the public safety and other, and/or impact congestion on Connecticut roads. And be it further resolved that the Ansonia Board of Alden is opposed to additional taxes, including new taxes on gasoline, heating oil, and electric bills that may unfairly and adversely impact Ansonia residents financially, and be it further resolved that our mayor, state representative, and state senator are encouraged to advocate this position on our behalf with the state legislature and report to the Ansonia Board of Alden any potential impact of tolls and new taxes on Ansonia residents and the fiscal affairs of the state of Connecticut. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Castleitis, seconded by Mr. Blackwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen, thank you Joe for that. Mr. Short?
Can we get the other, the additional names on?
I, I think we're all going to sign on, Mr. Short, absolutely, this is from all the aldermen, sitting here tonight in the chambers, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good point. Uh, resignations, I have a letter here from Ann Pitney, Mr.?
Mike Stubb.
It's coming up, yeah. Sorry. I have a letter here from, um, Ann Pitney, Dear Mayor Cassetti, I find it necessary to tender my resignation from the Board of Police Commissioners, effective as of this date, I have been ill and cannot fulfill my responsibility to the city of Ansonia, I have thoroughly enjoyed my seventeen years on the board, and I hope that I have served the citizens well. This is dated April second, 2019, respectfully, E. M. Pitney. Mr. Yaman?
Motion to accept the resignation and send a letter of thank you for many years of service this year.
Is there a second? Mr. Rivers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you, President.
Just want to mention on the resignations, um, because I believe it's definitely, uh, important to know. Edith Morales has served her last day with the city of Ansonia, the mayor reported it some time ago, and she was planning to retire. Um, definitely it's been a pleasure working with Edith, and, and I think that's been the same for the staff in City Hall for some time. Did an excellent job as our Human Resources Administrator, and want to wish her the best of luck at retirement, and, and thank her for a wonderful career of service with the city of Ansonia.
On that, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion, or I'd like to make a motion to send a letter of thank you.
Mr. Mr. Short, and Mr. Rivers, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Joe. How many years is that, about twenty?
Longer than that.
Thirty.
As mayor, Cliff, and secretary.
Congratulations, Edith. Appointments, I have a letter from, uh, Mayor Cassetti, dear Board of Alden, and pursuant, pursuant by powers under the city charter and code, I hereby submit the following appointments. Board of Public Works for a two-year term, Dan King, seventy, seventy Woodland Avenue, apartment sixteen, Ansonia, Connecticut, Republican Party, term expires twelfth, thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, replacing, uh, Mr. DeBensenzel.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Castleitis, seconded by Mr. Yaman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Mr. King abstains, thank you. Congratulations, Dan. Uh, Water Pollution Control Authority Board for a three-year term, Dan King, seventy Woodland Avenue, apartment sixteen, Ansonia, Connecticut, to a term expiring one thirty-one twenty, to replace Kenneth Klavnicki, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Yaman, seconded by Mr. Rivers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, one abstention, thank you, Dan. Ordinance, ordinances, Mr. Mr. Yaman?
Yep, same three ordinances, we discussed a public hearing earlier, uh, I mentioned earlier, today I'd be asking, after unanimous recommendations out of the ordinance committee, for approval of the WPCA ordinance that's before you, um, the land use, the change in the language regarding, uh, permit to an administrative fee, as well as the third one, which is the late, um, ordinance that was added at the beginning of this meeting for, which regards to arms. So I would make a motion to, uh, to approve the, I'm going to order, uh, the WPCA ordinance.
For a second?
I have. Can I ask questions before this is, uh?
Before it's seconded?
What's that?
If, can we, can we second it first?
Sure.
Mr. Cassetti, second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Room for discussion? I want it, I would like it clearly mentioned that because you have a new board, you're gonna potentially have a new board, nine members, on that WPCA, is that right?
No, the, the old board is going to stay in place. That's what was discussed at the ordinance. That's what was discussed at the ordinance committee.
I thought we were adding two seats to that.
Well, we're adding, we're adding to the existing board. So it's not going to be a new board in the sense that there's removal and replacement. There's going to be something, the understanding is to expand the board to nine.
We're going to have to get into the nitty-gritty here, okay? We voted, we voted, three people voted to pay the bill for the Pershing Drive problem, and our chairman is telling us it's illegal. Corporation Counsel, what do you do about that?
I believe the point raised was whether or not it was proper to have more than one member of the Board of Alderman on the commission. And in taking a look at the ordinance, the requirement that the board shall have one of Public Works and one of, one member of the Board of Aldermen is a mandatory minimum. It is not a cap. For example, you'll remember one of the statutes we look at every time it comes up, charter revision. It's very clear that it can be no more than X amount of public officials on that commission. And in a similar way, other ordinances and other statutes are very clear that a membership is not to exceed so many of a certain population. That's not the case here. Question is whether or not the membership, the constitution of the board passes the test in the ordinance. So does it include one member of Public Works? Yes. Does it include one member of the Board of Aldermen? Yes. If it includes more than that, that's fine, as long as there are other requirements that would make that impossible, and that's not the case here. So can you have more than one member of the Board of Alderman on there? Yes. But there must be, you'd have to check that box, that there's at least one. So those votes were entirely legitimate, there was no violation of the ordinance then. So in terms of, in terms, as it applies to that point, that would be my legal opinion of that point.
Okay, so in the, I don't want to speculate, I just want to go with what happened, because it makes it so much easier, it's not, it just is. So, if anyone read the state, a statement that was made in the Connecticut Post, I believe it mentioned about how the vote was illegal, you lost against the Board of Ed, now you're trying to take money out of here, and I want to, I just want to make this part clear to the public. We had an auditor on the same night that we voted, we had an auditor there that said that a million dollars would not affect anything with WPCA in a negative way. So we didn't make a rash decision deciding to just pillage some strongbox. We actually had the accountant there tell us that, so we made what I would call a rational decision. Now, I'm here to tell you, our current chairman at WPCA will not pay that bill when it comes in, and he believes that it's illegal, and I don't know how he can do that. How can he do, how can he physically do that with...
Mr. Stubb, we have, we have the ordinance to discuss, that's not on the ordinance. We can bring it up on a new business. I appreciate your concern.
Well, in my opinion, if your ordinance isn't going to fix your problem, what's the sense in having it?
You're adding members to the board.
Well, the idea behind the ordinance, if I may...
Yes, please.
It was just to create more collaboration between Public Works and the WPCA, more, and open those lines of communication. As we discussed in the ordinance committee, there was some concern after the issue on Pershing Drive, and making sure that communication is open, and we thought by adding two members from Public Works onto the WPCA commission and establishing at least two members there, that that open line of communication will be, I guess, more open, for lack of a better word, but, and so.
I want to read, I want to read the changes in the ordinance, and they're highlighted, they're underlined in your packet. "The authority shall have the power to assess such abonements as it deemed necessary, subject to the limitations of the Connecticut General statutes, in order to defray the cost of installation and maintenance of sewer lines in the city of Ansonia." "The authority shall be comprised of nine members," that's another change. Also, "membership shall include at least one..."
So it is nine members, sorry.
Excuse me.
Nine...
He just said it's a change.
"Membership shall include at least one member of the Board of Alderman and two members of the Board of Public Works." Another change is, "membership shall include at least one member of the Board," it's the same thing, redundant. And "all members of the Water Pollution Control Authority are required to attend at least one training session every other year, specifically the Water Pollution Control Authority. This training will provide useful information needed to make decisions in the best interest of the city of Ansonia. Failure to attend such training and provide documentation of the attendance will be caused for removal from the commission by the Board of Alderman." That's, those are the changes in the ordinance.
So when you went to nine, you went from seven to nine. So you're changing, you are changing that board. So I would like it written in there because of that change, that when that board is immediately filled, nine seats, that all the positions that are under election, whether it's signing checks, or vice chair, or chairman, they should all be voted for on that very first day, but because you're forming a new commission.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Organizational meetings are...
It's a new board.
It's a new board, you have a nine member.
I think that would be left up to the determination of the members of that board. If the members of that board are together and they determine they want to call for a new organizational meeting, they can do that. Technically, this board does have the option to pass an ordinance that does say that. Again, I want to stress that the underlying spirit of this ordinance is about cooperation, and it's about getting different viewpoints on the table, right, around the table.
And I'll just, and I'll just add, during the ordinance meeting, these changes were discussed, they were brought up with many people in the public commenting, including the chairman of the WPCA. It was in agreement with these changes, not as to the removal, because the concern was, is that the, this was, this was a push to remove the current members of the WPCA board, and that's not what, that's not what the intent was behind this. The intent was to add members that are also on Public Works to create...
On my opinion, you have a new board.
No, I understand that.
You have a new board.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't read it as a new board, I look at it as adding two members.
Nine members versus seven, you have a new board. I'm going to push on this a little bit, and then I'm just going to be quiet, but I'm just, I want to do diligence for the taxpayers here. We had a meeting, the money, the money was there according to the auditor, the current chairman refuses to pay, to adhere to that, and says that the votes that we cast were illegal. I mean, we're talking about the taxpayers' money here, we're talking, a bill that's getting ready to come into play, I mean, I just, I, I'm, I mean, I think I'm a grown-up. When you get a bill and you have people vote, because I've mentioned that, I've mentioned this, I have been here almost eight full years, there are so many votes that I felt were really right that I lost, and I went along, and I had to go along with the rest of, you know, whether it's the, you know, on the finance committee or whatever it may be, I went along with the flow. You just don't go to stand up and say, well, I'm not playing ball anymore, you know? You're, you had a legal vote, you can't have that money. I mean, that's, that to me, that's, that's part of the whole reason you're having to change in the board, so that somebody can't have that kind of power to make those kind of decisions.
Mr. Stubb, I agree with you, I agree 100%.
It's not personal either.
It's not personal.
The chairman has done an excellent job up to this point.
As far as I'm concerned, he's not the chairman. This board accepted his resignation, and I don't believe we reappointed anybody, so...
Our attorney says that...
It should be voted on by this board. We accepted a resignation that was presented before us, I'm not sure why he's still allowed to conduct business as a chairman. This board voted and accepted a resignation, and nobody else was appointed.
And John already have told you that the vote that you had was not illegal.
It wasn't, but my concern, because of the way that this is going, we are going to get a bill, and a bill at a point, and we are responsible to pay that, but we can't be wallowing around in this martial nonsense. To me, people vote, that's the way it is, if they voted, then they only want...
Back to my point, we voted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, he's not the chairman anymore, so this board reappoints him, that's my stance.
I would just add, the motion is, my motion was to enact the ordinance, it wasn't to for the resident. I understand your point, Charlie, and concerning whether or not that bill's going to get paid, but the bill is not yet...
Which has given us time. Which has given us time.
My point exactly, so I'm not, we're taking anticipatory action of something that might or might not happen.
I'm ready, I'm just basing my opinion on what I've seen thus far. Mr. [inaudible]. You were there, did I say anything that was wrong? I didn't imagine, or over, thank you, thank you for your support.
Charlie, I back you 100%, and I think the members of this board back you 100% as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor, was it seconded? Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Yaman.
Next motion to approve, ordinance number two.
Permits and fees, I'll read that, revised ordinance. Section 6-5, permits and fees, administrative fee for work without a permit, the administrative fee for commencing work for which a permit is required prior to issuance of a permit or a proper notification to the building official shall be $250. Motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Philopone. Discussion?
No.
Let's have a question. Is there currently anything?
Yes.
Yes.
It's revising the language that, I believe it indicates, it's a building permit fee, and the state, in order to come into compliance with the state statute, we were required to change that language to administrative fee.
And it was that, no?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The only change would be to the word says administrative fee.
The wording.
And the second sentence.
Motion on the floor, seconded, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Joe. On the waived ordinance regarding the arms issue that Chief Yan brought up before, motion to approve by Mr. Castleitis, Mr. Schuer seconded. All in favor, say, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Under new business.
He's a prick.
We have, um...
Mike.
Mike, Mike D'Alessio, the credit debit card option for a transfer station. Is there a motion to approve that? Mr. Yaman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Philopone, I sent it first, Rich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Mike. Revision to the bulk pickup policy, we have a discussion, we're going to vote on that tonight?
Fees for...
Yeah.
Sure.
What was I looking at on that, to have authorized Public Works to reconfigure the pickup policy?
As discussed.
Philopone? Seconded by Mr. Cassetti. Any discussion, gentlemen, on the bulk pickup schedule revision? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
One point of clarification, they're going to set the days and the weeks.
Yeah.
Where it's all going to go from, it'll be six months to three months.
Yep.
Right.
Number three, recording secretary salaries for Public Works Commission. Sheila, do you want to be heard on that?
Okay. Sure. Yeah, I mean, I was approached by Public Works, members of the Public Works Board, who said that they felt that it was important they have a recording secretary for Public Works Board. Now, I recognize that you guys already went through all the trouble of going through the boards and trying to make everything consistent, but this board feels that they require a secretary, and Jackie Craig has been taking minutes at the meetings and, you know, stamping them in and performing the duties, and I'm wondering if this board would like to consider on a, maybe board-by-board basis, or consider Public Works having a recording secretary, and that's what I have. It's, it's just a request for your consideration.
Yaman?
I would just say, I believe salary came off of the plan, I would just say, let's refer back to salary, it's a different recommendation to do salary.
Second? That's a motion?
Yeah.
Seconded. Discussion, gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Stubb?
Thinking real quick, so is she, she's, I think, done three meetings?
Yes, yes.
Mike, so is she going to get paid for that?
We're talking about that salary.
So in other words, as of now?
It's going to salary.
No, it's going to... It won't, it won't be resolved as far as she's concerned till the next Alderman meeting.
We're talking about that salary.
Yeah, that's, I just want, when she asks, I want, when she asks, I want a bill, because I had to look in her face and...
That's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Charlie?
Thank you.
Mr. Blackwell?
While we're talking about the credit card debit option for a transfer station, would it be possible to do a joint effort and possibly get arms on board with that, or would it be able to pay via credit card?
Let's take care of this other issue first.
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm doing the same, all the same thing.
We have a motion, the second, reverse salary, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Blackwell?
I apologize, I'm sorry for speaking out of turn, but I see that it's here for the transfer station. While we're dealing with this company and setting parameters and policies for that, would it be possible to entertain doing that for arms also at one time, setting it up as a joint effort, to be able to accept payments from, you know, from our patients that way?
I couldn't tell you, I have to ask on, you know, Chief Yan?
What are your thoughts on that? I get calls and requests for it all the time, a lot of other services do it, it's always been an issue internally for us to apologize for that. All I'm, I'm not asking for full approval, I'm just asking for it to be explored.
Oh, okay.
Doing it at the same time with Public Works, so we can find one vendor if it covers the whole thing, maybe, you know, it can be split, but people ask to put their bills on credit cards all the time. Some people just for points, they have those, like, and whatnot, and other people, they really can't afford it, they're looking at it all the time.
Mr. Cassetti?
It's not that we haven't looked at this numerous times, there are specific laws within the market. One of the biggest pieces is, they want the points, but the issuer of the credit card has to pay a fee. Usually, the 2%, 3% of the transaction is a fee paid by the vendor that's just buying the credit card from them. And these transactions don't allow us to charge that taxpayer, that user fee, so that that taxpayer can have a convenience. So the way around it is to charge a convenience fee as a separate item to the person, but then there are also other issues of buying the equipment used to do that. I don't know all the rules, I've been trying to find them out, we've had banks in here, there are some specific allowances for tax departments specific, but even that, where we've looked at and at this point haven't done it. We've been researching it, I'm not sure that what Mr. D'Alessio had on there, on his request, I'm not even sure if it's legit at this point. We need to still do more research here, we have Webster Bank looking for us, we've reached We've reached out to some other towns trying to figure out. You have other groups that do it, but they're not municipalities.
No, they do it.
There are vendors that are primarily doing it. Derby charges, I believe, at their transfer station. That's not run by the city of Derby. That's run by City Cardi. And so they can do it, but the cities can't. And there's rules that we need to make sure we're following before we jump off that bridge above. Nobody wants it more. Everybody in town wants it. I think the legislature needs to, the state legislature needs to change the rules so that they allow us to use these cards in the towns. But there's a lot of information we need to get before we start jumping in for everywhere. We want it in transport. We want recreation. We want it in building. We want it everywhere. It's the how. I'm not sure exactly how to get there. And we have looked at it. We continue to look. We talked to Webster Bank within the last week or two on it. We've had outside vendors come in trying to do it with the tax department. And again, it becomes difficult to trace the money, so we get a little bit concerned with the finance department. But we are working on it. We'll work with the both groups to see if we can find a way to do it. We'd like to roll it out for the whole city. We really would.
Thank you. So let's table the thing about Arms tonight.
And, um...
We're just looking to explore.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah.
Right.
To explore, yeah.
Right. I understand. Okay.
Mr. President, it might be useful to form a little committee of those department heads whose departments could really utilize this. Because as Rich mentioned, tax was actually right in this discussion just a couple of months ago, talking to vendors. But the concept, you know, just in general, trying to figure out how, what the different challenges are for the different departments. And just to keep the conversation going and kind of exploring what vendors there are out there.
Good idea. We'll do that, yes. Okay, number four, adoption of revised fee schedules. This is from Rhonda, from the Building Department. It looks like this on your agenda packet.
I'll just add, Mr. President, for me, but this, I believe, is the same fee schedule that was put before us. There haven't been any real significant changes to it. It's a change to what we have now, increasing the fees somewhat to come more into sort of on parity with our... So I would make a motion to adopt it.
And seconded by Mr. Philopol.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, number five, the authorization for the tax collector to execute the agreement. That's between Taxer Capital Services and Vialer Systems for collection of delinquent receivables owed to the town of Ansonia. As we all know, there's $1.5 million in outstanding uncollected motor vehicle taxes, and that list is growing every day. So we have a... Mr. Yaman?
Yeah, I'll just add, I've had some conversations with this, and I believe that I've explored with Corporation Council and given their opinion. I believe we found a way that the program can be implemented more equitably. Initially, some conversations about just being able to do it to cars that are on the street. Corporation Council provided us opinion indicating that we can do it to all delinquent taxpayers where their cars are. What we're requesting, based on some of the conversations that we had, is that we were willing to authorize the tax collector to authorize, to sign the agreement, however, with certain conditions, that the use of the boot shall only be authorized after the tax collector, after two notices to the delinquent taxpayer. And secondarily, that prior to the boot initiation, in other words, before that process gets started, if a delinquent taxpayer comes to the tax office and proffers partial payment, that delinquent taxpayer will be allowed to enter into a payment agreement whereby they would be paying that off within four months. Six months was the topic, what were we talking about? Six months. And once that, if, as long as that delinquent taxpayer adheres to the six-month payoff and that agreement, no boot action will be taken. So with those two caveats, I think the agreement, I would move to authorize the agreement to be signed by the tax collector.
I'll second that.
Well, seconded. You seconded? Any discussion? Yes.
No questions on yet?
Yeah.
I got a second. Now you can go.
So what's the cost of sending those cars out? You got the cost of it? Do you have to send out two of them?
I don't. I know, I mean, most, $5.65 is if they're being sent out certified, return receipt requested is what the going rate is at that. And we're not making the request that they're going to get sent out certified. Just that notice we sent out twice, so it'll be whatever, whatever we're paying for postage. Fifty-five, fifty-six.
Even if this is a great cost, I'm curious.
Yeah.
A cost estimate on the notices for something like this? Like, oh, no cars, no?
Regular notices, you mean? Delinquent notices?
Yeah.
We do that, or of course, probably two times a year anyway, they probably do that. Sending out a delinquent notice on that is probably about $1,500, $2,000 for the entire group of delinquent taxpayers.
And here it's...
We do that for the...
It's narrow to motor vehicle delinquents.
Online, you pay for it.
Pay power.
Mr. Blackwell, do you second the motion?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Mr. King?
I'm not a big fan of this program because I still believe that it's very hard to enforce fairly. A lot of people in town are going to suffer from this more than others. Also, the amount that we're talking, the fee to get this boot off is going to be more than the taxes collected. Quick period figures like the $1.5 million in uncollected taxes for a fee collectible would have to be within the last two-year cycle of someone's registration. Registration exists for two years. And that means they cannot pay taxes and get away with it for one year before they have to go and register their car again. Otherwise, you can't do it.
If they register it?
If they register it, which brings the fee too. And if it falls into that category, the car is no longer registered. It's no longer in this town. It doesn't have the right plates on it. The police can tell you, he sees these all the time. I saw one of my neighbors, they have the same, they have plates, it's the same plate on two different cars. So when the scanner comes by, it's not going to pick that out.
They regionalize it.
If it's one year, it's going to pay taxes. So chances are, unless it's a higher rate car, the fee's going to be more. The company putting the boot on it is going to get more out of it than the city is. And we're going to inconvenience somebody at the same time. So I'd like to see something that we can't boot the car for an amount less than the fee. Because that would just be ridiculous. Somebody gets a $60 tax bill and they get $175...
How much is, yeah, how much is the fee?
$175 to take it off your car.
Oh, to take it off the car, $175.
Plus whatever.
Your taxes, that's your... Right.
So my concern is that the fee, in a lot of cases, always... I have a current tax bill. It's for two cars. The one that blew up and the one I had to buy to replace the one that blew up. I got an extra year of taxes because apparently, you know, I didn't return the plates. It's hard to do when, you know, they're burnt. I didn't have plates. The car was junked. I didn't argue with it. Tax office gives me another year. Because technically, according to them, I still have, although the car did not exist. So that is in that number of uncollected taxes. That could never be enforced in that case. And there was a lot of cases like that. People moved, the car doesn't exist. So we're chasing this big number that I don't think is true. There are some out there. I'd like to see a combination of enforce this, but only in cases where it's over a dollar amount, that's more than the fee. And possibly, you know, can something like this service be used to track down unregistered cars, cars registered out of state that are parked there? Because I think that's the bigger loss. We have people that use our roads in our city and don't pay any taxes by simply having it registered in another state.
Mr. Castleitis?
My issue comes back to, in fourth word, we have very limited parking. If you're going to boot these cars and leave them on the street, you're taking valuable parking that we already don't have. Then the issue becomes, it's going to sit there for at least maybe three days, one to three days. You know, if I, you leave your vehicle out there, you usually get a red tag. But now we're going to have less and less parking because there's going to be boots on tires. I think you're going to find more often than not that people are just going to leave their cars.
Well, they'll be towed away after three days, whereas, you know, maybe somebody's parking out there for like a couple of weeks. But I think, Dan, to, you know, to address what you said, you also have to consider that you have people who have registered their vehicles, who are paying their motor vehicle taxes. And have been paying their motor vehicle taxes.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you have to have some equity. And we also need to collect money because it's just not fair.
Can I, Mr. Yaman? I mean, I just want to say, Dan, I understand where you're coming from. I just, I guess I look at it like, I'm hoping that the boot never needs to be used at all. That the notices go out and the people come in and are paying their taxes. And that's really maybe where the question becomes, is that, you know, making sure that the people that can pay are coming in, that they can't, that we have some reasonable solution. So to your example, is that somebody owes less than $150 on a car, why aren't they responding to the notices? If we're putting an exemption in there where they can come in and they can pay that $150 off over six months, I think that's about as fair as we can possibly be in that circumstance. So to avoid that $175 fee.
But to make a fair argument of that, that has never happened. Our tax office does not give you a break. They cannot legally, cannot charge you interest. So if the bill gets higher and higher, they don't have the option saying, oh, okay, don't worry about it. The bill keeps going until it's paid. There is no break in it. There is no...
It just avoids, it avoids the party's spending.
It avoids the boot.
There is no guarantee. And would be reported to the state as you owe the taxes. But remember how that, like, from the top years ago, people being reported as being clear of taxes, while in fact, many of them owe $1,000. So we have things like that.
And then you have, the bargaining brings up a big point here where, you know, some people may not register at all. And that's a very large loss of revenue. And I think that's why it's important, if we're going to use this program on the other side, we do equip our police scanner with the proper programming to be scanning for the unregistered vehicles and be hitting it on that end as well. And then essentially applying this program in the most fair way possible, affording not only two notices, but the ability to come in and say, listen, I can't pay everything. I can pay a little bit, and I can enter into an agreement with a sunset provision. That way it's fair for everybody. No one gets a different deal than others. Six months, it gets paid off. What it's doing here, however, is introducing a stiff penalty in all other areas of the notices to pay off date.
Mr. Stone?
Okay. This particular thing has been tried, we talked about this before, it failed to go through, right? How many years ago was that?
Maybe seven years.
Okay. It failed to go through. Here we sit in the same situation again, where you need that, you need that money, and it's not fair that people are doing that. But the part that makes it so simple to vote yes for this is, they said if we didn't like it, they would let, they just stopped. I mean, so if, all of your questions that you're asking about, well, I may not like it. Well, if that happens, the company said they'll withdraw. What is the deal here? We need to, this is like an exploratory. Are we afraid to step our toe into the pool? I mean, come on.
Mr. Rivers?
Okay, I'm going to take the other side. How about the people that pays their taxes every single year? I got five, six cars in my yards. I pay it every year.
Cadillacs, too.
You got to, I mean, I understand that there are people who can't afford it. But that's why, if they're getting two notices, that they could come down and work out a deal, then if you get booed, he'll boot it for you.
Agreed, but we have never done that before. That's why they're adding a note.
Well, let's vote on it and see what happens.
I just have one last question. Are you allowed to pay your taxes? Let's say I get my tax bill for my motor vehicle and I want to go and pay it. If I go down there and pay it as soon as I get it, will they set me up on a payment plan? Or do I have, or is it due in full when I receive it? That's my question.
It's going full.
The payment plan is really an exception, a special exception.
Well, see, that's my, that's my worry, is now you're giving people an option. If I get my tax bill and I owe $400 and I'm obligated to go down there and pay it in full, and I don't have it, I think that you're going to encounter a lot of people just saying, you know what, I'm not going to pay it, because if I don't pay it, the city's going to put me on a six-month payment plan, and I'll get to pay it over six months.
It may trigger, yes.
So I see, I think you're going to see a lot of people opt for that option, and you're going to...
Well, no, what Dave is saying is that it could trigger an unintentional extension period.
Correct.
However, again, it wouldn't apply to interest, so if you're late, you're going to be owing...
No, I get it. I'm just saying that this could be a problem, that you're not collecting them upfront.
Exactly. You know, Blackwell's right here. It could potentially create this late payment cycle where people are accepting the interest. However, it is delaying their ability to register.
Right.
I get that. I'm just saying that this is something that might be worth thinking about. You know what I mean? That's all.
But if work gets out, you don't really have to pay everything. But then again, it is like accepting a credit card, right? You're buying something on a credit card with interest. You are now putting strings on this, and if you're late, if you forget, now there's going to be a...
Yeah, I'm just worried about the tax, how the tax office is set up to handle that. If people know that if I don't pay my taxes, I'm going to get a late notice, and then I can go down there and get a six-month payment plan instead of paying it all at once, I'm going to go for that option. I understand that there's interest and stuff. I just wonder if the tax office is set up to handle where a majority of the taxpayers decide, you know what, that's what we'll do. Might as well do it. You know, it's going to cost me a little more, but I could pay it over six months. I just didn't know how they're set up, if they can handle, if a lot of people, you know, catch on and say, you know what, we could do this.
Although, really, the way it works right now, you could argue that that does exist.
Well, I'm asking, I don't know if it exists.
Not that there's any tax, not that there's any tax payment plans being offered because our tax collector doesn't offer that. But by default, without the boot, technically, that does happen. If you say, well, I don't want to pay, what's the worst that could happen? I'll accrue interest. You could wait six months, you could wait a year. You could wait more than that if you're willing to pay that consequence.
I got you. I just didn't know if the tax collectors are set up to accept payments for a lot of people. I mean, I can understand just for small amount.
That would be, I think, the way, the way it would be explained is that avoids nothing else but the boot. Every other consequence that you typically face for waiting six months, you would face. So really, it's the same as now. The difference is our new program, the boot, would be delayed where otherwise it would be, or would be booted.
Understood. Thank you.
And I think the marshals get to offer, I'm sorry, payment plans because there's fees and interest tacked on to that. So they have some flexibility. Sure, you could go into a payment plan, but you're going to pay, you're really paying for that.
It's really like saying, you get that extra, but you need to not only enter that agreement, you need to pay a little now. So the idea is, some of them normally wouldn't pay at all, is at least paying something now, then within six months, hopefully, we'll pay the whole thing. It's an interesting, but it is certainly, like Charlie kind of mentioned, you know, it's an experiment. It's trying if this approach will improve delinquent taxes for the benefit of everyone.
And you're looking at the grand list, and it's not, and you've got a governor who wants to tax everything. And you need more, and you need, all ears, this is to all ears. You need more tax, you need more revenue without raising your people's taxes. And this is a possibility. And if you let this go, and you got to sit at the hard vote when your budget's getting done, and you cut something out of something you wished you didn't. Right? Kindergarten or some other thing. Well, I think I got to use the assets that have been proven over time.
If you went after the people that have their cars registered out of state, it would...
Oh, yeah, it's just tracking those down.
Parallel effort.
That's, yeah.
Which we'll talk to the chief about how we could look at that. Because we have the existing hardware. The question is, how do we get the programming out there?
But that's the key.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Dan said no. Anyone else? One no? Motion carried. Thank you. Executive session, Mr. Mariney? I'm sorry, is there any other, any other, any other new business? Mr. Yan?
There were the two items that were mentioned by Mr. DeLassio.
Right. Light communications, one and two?
Tires. $5 for tires and then reducing the days of...
All sixty.
Pickup. Yeah. The days of the users.
Yeah, the days, yeah.
Okay. I make the motion, approve, vote.
Second.
Has a motion? Motion on the floor, Charlie, you hear the motion?
$5 for tires.
Charlie, you hear the motion?
What?
The $5 for the tire?
And?
And the bulk pickup schedule?
Yes.
We already did both.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that.
There's the days.
We did the days. We cut the days. We didn't do the bulk pickup, switch from every six months for three months and three months. He's cutting it to six weeks and six weeks.
Mr. President, under old business, we have to deal with the...
Wait, we have, we start, we start a new business. Hold on, hold on, hold on, guys. Can you have a little quiet in here, please? Thank you. So do we have the motions?
I have moved to approve charging $5 for tires and cutting the days of operation of the transfer station down to three days a week.
We already did that.
Yeah, that's what she has.
You didn't vote on it. So I have a motion, but not a second.
Mr. Castleitis, second. Discussion, Yaman?
I just want to make sure that one of those three days will include Saturdays as we stand right now.
Well, it's a half day.
Right, it will. One of those three days will include Saturdays. I can still make it to the transfer station.
All right, now we got to do the vote.
Wait, can we vote?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, Mike.
Vote is done. All right, it's done.
Eight twenty-four, referral set.